We've got a pretty unique opportunity to get something in our community to really benefit everybody in the community. I've been working for almost two years with YMCA to try and make something happen here. I started looking at opening my own gym first, and that just led, you know, one thing led to another, looking at equipment, working my way up on their hill there to their big facility, hit it off with their CEO, and he said, "Well, step you up into the gym, let's put a YMCA there." So that sounds amazing. Throughout the course of this, you know, there's been a lot of different discussions on a lot of different places and, you know, a lot of different things. We've looked at every facility in town. We've got a few options. Something that's come to light here fairly recently is we might have a shot at the old elementary school. Now, the other things in town, you know, we can put, we can put things in this town to serve the community with, with any of them, but what we can do the most good with would be that school. We can set up a most variety of programs to serve from the youngest kids all the way up through our oldest seniors, and that's what we need to do. The Y, you know, people hear YMCA and they think it's just a pool. You set the pool, it'll be hard to put a pool up here without a whole lot of money. We'll put anything in we can.
Yeah, like Ravenswood or Mill Pond, you know, they've got that saltwater pool. There's a lot of, you know, physical therapy that occurs in there.
I'm sure there is. The pools are ridiculously expensive.
Yeah, it's true.
Just, not, not just to construct the top rate, but if, you know, if we can get the funds together, and that's the thing, right now, there's a lot of federal money that's rolling around, just like Councilman Lloyd was talking about. That money that's coming in to make that senior housing, that's a great thing. After that, there's a lot of money that's going to be floating around still yet that they're looking at community development. We all need to get together, contact the council, you know, the council, not just these councilmen, but at a county, but contact all our state senators, start telling them, "We need this in Clinton." You know, November's coming up, and a lot of them are up for reelection, and they want their name on something like this. I don't know how much everybody really knows about Y, but it's a whole lot more than it's Y. There's a lot of programs, about a couple little short videos, if y'all got a minute to watch. There's a lot of programs that we can do to benefit more than anybody ever really thinks.
Josh, while you're getting ready here, what kind of funding have you been looking at?
What kind of funding have we been looking at?
Yeah.
What, what wind up happened, make it happen to the town? The Y can come in once the facilities established, come in and make the whole thing happen. As far as getting that building, you know, what, the little bit of discussion we've had with like the Board of Education was getting that school donated to the town, and then looking at federal dollars to come in and fix that building up. The Y does not have the money to fix it up.
Yeah, I realize that.
As, as not, you know, everybody goes upon a hill, looks at that place, they say, "Well, these people are voted," but it's not the case. And we, we're, the Y operates on three things: a shoestring budget, donations, and volunteers.
And, you know, in the past, I've talked to Y, YMCA, the last 30 years.
Yeah.
And I understand how they operate.
Yeah.
I know that was a great deal when they got to go to the gun.
Yeah.
And take it all over yourself.
What, what happened in my memory was the community got involved in that.
But you're looking to get that school just to open the doors, you're looking probably at a couple million dollars.
Yeah.
So, you know, you're going to, you're going to be looking at real strong funding and...
Yep.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, I completely realize that. It's, it's not going to be, it's not going to be an easy task, no matter how tough, but the opportunity's there.
Who owns the building on Hillcrest?
Yeah.
Who do you want? On Hillcrest Drive?
Who owns that?
Yeah, I know who owns that building.
I'm pretty sure the Y did the last, and I think it was, if I remember right, it was some kind of deal that worked out between Old Charleston and split them in, where they took it over. But as far as owning, I can't remember if they owned one in Cross Lane or not, but everything else is owned other places. And they just come in and manage the space.
Is the Y not interested in opening this one up here?
Wouldn't be able to. It, it just wouldn't be feasible for them.
Unchecked. YouTube video player, YMCA, so much more, what pause button? Replay button, YouTube video player, full screen, YMCA, so much more, YouTube, desktop one, see slider, slider at midnight of 1:30.
Now, one of the great things about YMCA is when they get in a community, they look at the community's needs. We've got a facility over in Cross Lane that started out as a fitness center, and they did some childcare. And over time, things developed and developed, and they saw a more and more need for childcare. Today, there's not one piece of fitness equipment in that facility. They do childcare from two months up, and they do it with excellence. It's one of the best childcare facilities in the valley. And I say that's what we need up here? No, I think we need a large mix of things. We've got a very diverse population, needs a lot of stuff up here as far as age groups go. But with someone in the community that knows the community, you know, probably a lot of you all here don't know me, I know a lot of you all here do, but I, you know, been here all my life, my family's been here all their lives, been there six generations, not real sure, but, you know, somebody that can look into the community and figure out what the real needs of this community are, and, and form that Y, and the staff and the organization that'll be there to fill the needs of this community. And we got a lot of troubles in the world right now, and a lot of ways for our youth especially to, to turn down the wrong gears. Getting involved in something is a big part of keeping them out of that stuff. We're, I'm working on that downtown right now. The Y's got a program called Achievers, it's based in Cincinnati, as an intercity youth development program. They get in there and they get kids, and they just mainly teach them about their choices, you know, that they don't have to make the same choices they're making out on the streets that they're sitting. You know, they teach them about college, they help them with tour group and prep. As that, they teach them about all the trades, because not every kid's meant to go to college. We get that program rolling down there, and that's the thing with all the programs that the Y's got. We got them established in all these other places. If we get something going here, all we gotta do is look and say, "We want that, we take it and stamp it here and make it our own." And we've already got a lot of the building blocks in place where we can make things happen.
There's also something I can speak for everybody here. We'd all love to see a Y come here.
Yeah.
We'd love it. You said there were other options, you may want to look at that. Because you're asking us, as town councilmen, stewards of the tax, our tax dollars, to look at, really to kind of stick our neck out.
Well, and that's, that's part of the reason.
And in case it doesn't work out, we'll be left with it and to have to demolish it.
That, that's part of the reason I'm here, is to tell the community that it can't work without the community getting involved, and without everybody coming out, signing up, volunteering.
Well, if you buy this and do it, that would be great. As far as asking us to do it, I would say it myself. And I would love to have a Y here. I would.
Yeah.
What's going on with that stuff? We'll stay there and look at it for a hundred years?
It's gonna be tore down. There's gonna be a truck put around, there's gonna be a green face, there's gonna be a splash of water.
I thought I was on the list to tell them. I'm sorry.
And none of that's a bad idea, Dave.
Yeah.
Not a bit of that's a bad idea. I'm just saying with, you know, here's, here's the building options we're looking at. I talked to Bill about the hardware, talked with you all about the basement of the middle school. If, if, you know, the scars with all the line, Smith's grocery store, you know, if they're not going to put something back in there, that'd be a great place. And the elementary school. The more space we've got, the more things we can do, and that's what it all boils down to. They're willing, you know, the CEO and the Board of the Y, they're on board, they're, they want to do something to serve the over here community. But they've also told me that, you know, they, they hear about the things that they want up here, about the patch on infighting and ridiculous attitudes that some people have up here, and it worries them a little bit that the community isn't going to come together and get behind it. They're just as willing to put something in Elkview as they were in Clinton, but they're a little more willing to put something in Clinton, as I've been pushed to my boat with.
We're farther away than you, and Charleston's convenient for us.
I know, I know.
Ten minutes and they're there.
I know. And this, to really make, to really make a Y's headwork here, we have to create a string of things that would serve the whole flood affected community. Start down Coombskin with that pool, setting it up as a year-round facility, setting up hopefully the hub here in Clinton and for it all. And at some point, even stretching all the way up to Clay and serve that community, getting transportation back and forth through the mall, so that people can get from one to the other, trying to get the communities back together, get everybody out of their houses and off their phones, and interacting with each other.
And that's one of the problems that Clinton has, is, I mean, there's nothing here for anybody to do. And if you had something like that, I mean, it would draw people to our town. I mean, we've got Herper Duper coming to Elkview, some people think that's a bad idea. Well, I mean, there wasn't a lot of choices, and I think that we're still going to be fine with that, with us getting the facility that that's going to be down there, that's going to be the high school that everybody's going to want their kid to go to. So, Clinton, in the end, is going to benefit from that school being in Elkview just as much as it is if it was right down there, maybe even more, okay? Because it's going to be, people are glad to be in the district, but to get on with that, housing's cheaper here than it is in Elkview, okay? All this just starts a lot, and then Clinton is probably better off than they were before the flood.
Another reason I think, you know, not just the space up there, but if you got something up in that upper end of town, and you're drawing traffic through town, it benefits all the businesses.
And you've got the ball field right there and everything.
My thought, the clinic's important, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it brings, you doubt, you want to this side of town.
Yeah, yeah.
Has there been any discussion about any kind of programs that could... Is there any kind of plan or anything that is just beginning, but any discussion of what kind of programs could be?
What we could implement?
Yeah.
Some are feeding programs for the kids.
Something that everybody can see, we can distribute, and everybody can look at.
I'll get some information prepared.
That way we is...
But there's senior programs, all Silver Snickers programs, they're, they're, we draw.
I was thinking about the Silver Snickers, because I've had some dealings with the Y. Is some of their insurance that you have, you may have, will pay for your membership if you won't have.
And there's something else about the Y financially, it's going to turn anybody away. Nobody gets turned away. You've got to have some skin in the game, but nobody gets turned away. You've come married and you want a membership, you get a membership. That's part of what that Spirit of the Valley campaign that we're doing tomorrow, you know, tomorrow's the culmination of it all. All those funds are raised for that, to help the people, you know, the less fortunate people, the communities, be part of it. The Y's a lot more than a general pool, a lot more. And I, Dave, I completely understand. And I, I feel the same way. I do not want to see, I'm a, I'm a son of Clinton, I don't want to see the town burdened with that building, and it turn into nothing but a competitive. That's the last thing I want to see. That's why the community has to get together and get behind this. How to exactly get that, short it, I don't know. You know, you can sign petitions and do all that stuff all day long, but when the day comes, the doors open, you never know. It's something we have to decide. So, you know, if you go up to Montgomery and Smithers and look at what they did up there, you know, West Virginia Tech pulled out of there, and they said, "What are we going to do now?" Through a little bit of talking, they got in touch with the Y, and the Y came up there and showed a little bit of interest in those communities, absolutely poured out. They came together and beat the doors down, the string that we know.
Well, they need to start, because they got very close. Then losing that college, that's a real problem. It would bang, it would bang. So I'm glad they may all step in and take over all the facilities.
The economic disaster that they had has been something that's been slower. Here, for years, when the flood hit, it just absolutely gives a kick in the butt. But since the flood, you know, there's been a lot more energy in this town, and I've seen it a long time, and that's what got people looking at the community. Because the town...
Well, it's going to bring younger people to Clinton, and we, we need that back.
We do, we need younger people, but we also need to serve seniors, too. We need to serve people who are in their late-aging, that's what we're speaking about.
Senior meals.
Yeah.
Josh, is there, is there a way, is there a certain place that we can keep abreast of all of this as far as what's happened, what we need to do?
Right now, I think a lot of what we need to do is start, like I said, you know, contact Commissioner Harper, Commissioner Solanga, Capito's office, Manchin's office. These are people that want to see good things happen, especially at the time of year that it is. Kent has absolutely done great things for this town. He looked at the library, looked at what you're doing with senior housing. He cares about the Elk River, no doubt about that.
Is there, you know, maybe money available that if the town, the council's worried about this becoming a, a problem for them, that maybe there's money available that could be dedicated to that? If it doesn't fly, then here's the money to get rid of the building.
I, I don't know. There, there's a lot of federal funds that General Warner's got his hands on now. Once this housing issue gets straightened out, my understanding is it's getting turned to economic development. At that point, that's when we need to be ready, and everybody needs to be beating down the doors, saying, "We want this, this is something that needs to happen for our community." This man.
My name is Suzie Asavido, and I'm with Congressman Alex Rooney's office. If y'all want my car, we would love helping someone like this.
Absolutely.
I am Elkview girl. I live in Big Chimby, so y'all are near and dear to my heart, and this is super.
Like I say, I'm, you know, more raised than within, and I want to serve my community, but this isn't just going to be about Clinton, it's going to serve the Elk River. It's going to serve, you know...
Well, you know, it took the Elk River to get this back after the flood. Do you want what I'm saying? I mean, everybody pulled together, and I saw, I guess, good out of people that I thought was gone, okay? So when that did happen, we, we found the good again, and I think that we could get a lot of people involved in helping with this, getting this here.
Well, Josh, not only do you, and we know this from the library, we pull from Clay and Rome.
Yeah, absolutely.
A lot of our patrons are from not Clinton, and they're from these other areas.
And those are areas that need served.
Yeah.
That's what the Y's about, is to serve.
Absolutely.
It's not just about serving the members, it's about serving the community.
Absolutely.
And you know, Josh, there comes a time, and sometimes you just got to take a leap of faith, you know? I mean, if you want something bad enough, we can sit around and, as a community, and whine for the next 20 years, like I've heard for the last 50 years. "There's nothing to do here, there's nothing for our kids, we don't have anything for the seniors, we don't have anything to do, Clinton's dead." Well, pick up a shovel. Pick up a shovel.
That's it.
And sometimes you just got to take a leap of faith that this is what we're going to do, just, just like when, when you all did the building up here, you, you weren't guaranteed the funds to get all that done and everything. It was a leap of faith that it turned out as a wonderful thing.
Yeah. We'll do it to whoever thought there'd be a leak there, serve in 2000.
Exactly.
I mean, I, I with this, I work at the library, and I mean, the parking lot stays full all the time, which is helping the library, because people are seeing today.
Clinton has the potential to be a, a great town.
Absolutely.
We can be a bad one. You know, we don't have whitewater, we've got gray water.
And we've got high act.
We've, we've got a lot of stuff going for us, you know? And as this rounds to rounds, maybe we can...
Well, maybe we can, of course, maybe there's other opportunities, maybe we can get in a conversation with you guys again. You mentioned, you know, Bill has a building there that hadn't been built back, and I don't know what his plan for our career is, but maybe we come up with something.
Yeah, but like I say, that's, and to me, any option to get it in Clinton is a good option, but what's going to do the community the best is what I, you know, what I really want to strive for, we got to strive for the best.
That's right, that's right. We need to strive for the best. We need to quit settling for second best, and we need to go big or go home on this stuff.
Exactly.
We've got tremendous potential in this town.
But I, now, but I...
I, I understand the concern there, too. I do. I understand the concern there, too.
I don't want to see it as something that's going to hurt.
But we've got to start thinking more of ourselves, we got to get out and recruit interest with people, Clay County, Rome County, get them on board with us, trust me. There's going to be a lot of people in Clay County and Rome County that will be just as excited about this as the people in Clinton, and I've seen a lot of excitement about this.
We probably have as many employees at the clinic from Clay and Rome as we do in our own.
Yeah.
You know, Josh, one thing, when you hear Y, everybody thinks swimming pool, and isn't that the thing we miss the most?
Yes, well, we miss the most.
We miss a swimming pool, you know?
But when they're here, you know, getting, getting the right pressure on the right people to come through with those federal dollars, and it could be, you know...
And even better, if you're around swimming pool, like we was talking about, when people see the Y, that's what I think.
Well, and that's what they do, and that's why I really like it.
Swimming pools are like movie theaters, they're, they're hard to be sustained.
Well, they, they all lose money.
Yeah.
They all lose money.
Exactly, and...
Well, they just cost a lot of money.
You know, I'm, I'm one of the children that never went, just to help support the pool, but a lot of people did that. That's how we have a swimming pool.
They, they, the pool loses money. I've had a lot of experience with pools here recently, and they, they just do. I mean, it's a great thing, you know, you've got, like the Y on the hill, you know, they've got that huge pool up there, the pool loses money all the time, they make that up in different areas. But the pool itself, if it was there by itself, it wouldn't stay open. You've got to have other things to support it.
Josh, several councilmen, mayor, every council meeting I was ever in, somebody kind of wanted their kid to have something to do in this town, like we've brought it before. I think this is a tremendous idea. And I was, myself, I think the council ought to draft a letter, a resolution, whatever you want to call it, show your support, show the town's support to the year board director for this project.
Yeah, thank you, I know, yeah.
Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, even since the flood, and even before the flood, I've been part of some of the assessment numbers that have been going on in this community. A health, Clinton has done assessments about what this community needs and wants when it comes to addressing health, the economic development process that has been going on. A lot of ideas have already been captured, it's just you've already identified the problem, so this is one of the solutions. So as you guys are drafting letters, or talking to your congressman, then I would suggest you go back to those assessments and see what the results were, because that's your community's support for all of these priorities that people want to attach to. So that's what I would recommend. The other thing is, I know that Ruth mentioned about the diabetes coalition that's coming in doing focus groups here one Thursday, and then one for patients on another evening. So one of the questions that's going to be asked is, what does the community want when it comes to addressing physical activity? What are other opportunities that you are seeking in your community that, you know, help you build up your own health? So I would recommend that if you guys come out and make your voices heard, that's another assessment that's going to be going on that will capture the, what's going on, what people want when it comes to addressing health and economic development.
We're working pretty close with the agency, all, all the friends, but, yeah, I'll be there, appreciate it. I've been talking with many of those things, too. Yeah, the whole county needs that, right? Any other questions for me, buddy?
I mean, Josh, do you, does the Y team with other, like, well-known organizations in, in terms of funding and this and that and the other, to do kind of cooperative programs? I guess for like, for example, maybe 4H and WBU extension programs, FFA?
I have not heard of that, but what I've seen so far is we'll take all the help we can, anybody we can pull together on projects, get things going. That's, especially Mr. Warner, I don't know if any of you all ever met or see him, but I know he's Warner, he likes to get stuff done.
Yeah.
You know, he's a retired Army Colonel, he, he expects results, and once, once a project gets run like this right here, he wants, he wants this done, he wants us up here, he wants us serving this community, he wants it done yesterday. He's, he's all about serving this up here, but getting, getting that shorty of the town together, getting the community on board, you know? Like I say, what's, if it does happen, people take the town coming out, slide it up, and then be willing to volunteer and help make the place go, too. It'll be, it'll be hard to make a YMCA break even in this area, and they know that, they're fully aware of it. He was the one that brought it to light, he should have said, you know, "I don't, I don't think you'll ever get one in the green there," except that if we can take a small loss and serve this community, we're willing to do it.
Well, and we as a town need to work together.
Yeah, whose definition of a small loss?
If the adults can get this done.
Yeah. But the potential's there, of course, to do really something, just growing our community.
Yeah, might surprise you, might surprise you after the flood.
Yeah.
Because people feel a lot differently about things now. Personally, I would love to see that, that school building saved. I know, I know that's a risk, you know, but what isn't in life, okay? But personally, I would love to see that building saved, as opposed to more green space. We have a lot of green space, we have a rail trail that's probably going to go, I mean, we've got a walking town, I just, I think it's a great use of that resource there if we can make that work.
Well, when you think about it, everyone of us took a risk when we put our houses back together.
That's right, that's right.
We didn't have to do that. And, you know, so I, I think that we all deserve this, you know, so I think it's a good thing.
Like I say, go forward, I just, I want to refer to everybody, you know, contact our councilman, you know, county commissioner, contact your senators.
So, I'm sorry. So, I'm still concerned of how we can, how we can keep everybody involved by having a, a hub that we can all connect on. Can we do a Facebook page? Can we do a website, something that everybody can be a part of and see what's going on, see when we need to, you know, I, I understand, and I'll start tomorrow as far as calling people.
Not for the community, but for our city, or something like that, I understand.
Yeah, it's only a kind of progress.
Yeah, there's progress waiting.
I'm getting the eye.
Well, right now, you're saying, call your senators, call anyone who can push the issue.
Put pressure on them for the funds.
So what's the word from the board as far as giving the town? Are they willing to give it to us and the council is to vote whether they want it or not, or?
To my, to my understanding, the last time I was in discussion with any of them, that was pretty well where it's at. Now, Shayna had said that she, after this, this evening, she wanted to look into having a meeting with the Board of Education, like a community meeting with the Board of Education, to make sure that they are all with her. My understanding was that they'd kind of said, you know, if the town wants to do this and they want to take that on, now it, it will become, you know, there's already female money that's been appropriated to tear down that building and to put all that stuff in that Councilman Lloyd was talking about. If the town decides to take that building, all that money goes to what? It doesn't get re-appropriated, it's just gone. So then there's no money to tear that down, once it's, it's, there is a risk, you know, and I want everybody to be aware of that. And I'm the last person that wants to see this town saddled with something like that, but...
But we really don't need a truck either. We need the door out there in the building.
And what, what we have talked about, grand scheme with the Y, is if we could get something like this going in Clinton, going to the board as well, and saying, "Look, you've got all these fields and everything down here, Hoover Tennis Course and all that, we'll manage those. We'll manage this Little League Field, we'll manage those, we'll manage that Coombskin Pool, we'll put all these pieces together." Granted, it's spread out YMCA, but it's still YMCA.
Right.
At that point, we got to arrange some transportation, which we can do, you know, we can get kids packed back and forth to access all these facilities. We're looking at turning Coombskin into a year-end facility. Yeah, we might not be able to put a pool in Clinton.
They've done that during the flood. The Y done that during the flood with, with our kids in this area.
Oh, I know, yeah.
They bus, they sent a bus out there.
Well, even if you have transportation for our kids to go to Coombskin, you know,
Well, even if you have transportation for our kids to go to Coombskin, you know, that'd be great.
Well, too, the school is a part of our history. We've lost so much history in this town. And it's sad, in a way. I mean, I realize...
It's our time, all of them, I'm not gonna be around here much longer, but, but it's
history.
What's an ideal location, too? There's parking, or anything.
Parking, there's a field, there's a green area.
It's just an ideal location. You need classrooms up here that won't affect it.
Well, that's, that was, you know, I, I was probably a little over a month ago, went clear through the building, from the basement all the way up. I was expected to go in there and see just walls covered with mold and the place in the world we're saving, it's really not that nice. I've got a lead report, a asbestos report on my computer right now, haven't had a chance to dig through, but a little bit I've looked at, it's not that bad. It came out, but it's, it's gonna take the community to make it happen.
I'm just saying, we say, go for it. I'd say that more.
Well, that, that's it. There's gonna have to be, like I say, pressure put on the right people, you know, contacting General Weyer's office, it's like, and it means, I know Shayna's been in touch with you.
Well, I think we have to come together in the community, too. I think we've got two separate groups that are concerned, and two groups that want, you know, and you've got to work together.
Here's another thing about the YMCA, it's not about you, and it's not about you, and it's not about you, and it's not about you, it's about the community, it's about everything.
Right, and we have to work together.
It's not a one-sided organization where any party has any kind of say, it's about the community. And it'll take the community to make it happen.
You need to have public meetings where people can go and know what's going on, and move.
So, Josh, can, can someone set up a Facebook page?
Absolutely.
Okay, then I'll take all that task, too. Set up a Facebook page, put it on the town Clinton, and put a link on it, so that everybody can knows what's going on.
We can, we can post all the numbers, you might want to mention that, numbers of the senators and congressmen and phone numbers.
All right.
Yep.
I mean, there's people in Clinton I don't even know. Because without a store, you don't see them at the store.
Or the library.
As town council, but we have put it on the agenda for the next meeting, but we emphasize it for the community, so if anyone interested and want, want to see this go forward, please attend, so that we can have a formal approval letter or progression, progress, to say, we've got, the first meeting we had, we had 79 people sign up and wanting that, to get the, get the word out in the community to say, Monday night, if you don't say any, do anything at all, come sign up, you know, if you want to see a YMCA in Clinton with some projects, with some things going on, come to, come to the meeting, sign it, and then you can go home, as far as that goes, or stay and listen to a council meeting, or listen to the agenda for, maybe have Josh come back and speak again, at that point. Where everybody, I mean, everybody uses Facebook.
Yeah, something's in under the school.
And so, you can always just post, hey, we're gonna have a meeting the next, you know, next, the first meeting in September, anyone who's interested in the Y, tell your friends, come to Clinton.
Josh, we can put some stuff out on the Clinton leader as well, and Mark and I, I just mentioned to him, we can put the names and numbers of all the, the politicians that we need to contact, so that you can just go on the Clinton leader, and there's the number of where you contact them.
Why don't you all set up?
General Weyer's office.
We can do that, we can do that.
I'll go with the new rack, Ken.
We can do that.
Well, we could also even draw, draw a draft letter for each individual to sign, to mail to their senator or their council.
Yeah, we could put a PDF on the thing, where they can just print it out, sign it.
The numbers are already out there.
If they're interested in it.
It's already, we don't have to do it.
Sign the individual's name, they said.
Yep.
Yeah.
And they get a mailbox full, got 300 letters, though.
Put that in.
Yeah, somebody will make something up. I wonder what we've done wrong now?
Well, you know, I do have a little bit of a self-serving interest in this. I've got a four-year-old daughter and an eight-year-old daughter. And what's gonna be best for them is a strong community. And what's gonna make a strong community is everybody coming together, whether it's behind YMCA or whatever. I want them to see down the road that Diades tried.
Are we thankful for it?
Yes, yes.
All you want to talk about. I don't know how many of you went up to the, when they were up at Ball Field, but I was talking with Avon Coburn, the ball player.
Good ball, yeah.
Yeah. And he said, you know, this is a great thing, and I'm here to tell you if it can be done. Josh, we'll get it done. And Avon, he works, he's the marketing director.
He's a marketing director.
Yeah, he was a really nice guy, but he had a lot of faith in you.
Yes, thank you, Josh, for doing, promoting us and our town and everything, it's great.